Yeah. No, usually it's.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Hopkinton Select Board is being held both in person and remotely using the video conference platform Zoom. I believe all members participating in the meeting tonight are present in the room. The public has the option of attending in person here at Town Hall or via Zoom using the link posted in this meeting's agenda. This meeting is being recorded. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we're going to move to public forum. Each person will have two minutes to speak at public forum. Please start by stating your name and address. I am going to start to change the public forum format a little bit in the interest of time, and I've put a lot of thought into this. We're going to go back to the original two minutes. So at two minutes, I will kind of give you a heads up, you know, finish up your final thoughts. Also, I will be, you know, capping it at tonight. It will go till about 6:20 so that we can move on. When I look through these agenda items, one of the things that we want to be cognizant of is a lot of people from Town Hall put a lot of effort into what goes into this every week, into these meetings, and I want to make sure for those that come and attend in person that they're able to be here and get through them on a timely event. When I say I'm going to stop it at 6:20, we will continue that at the end after we get through all of our other agenda items. I want to continue hearing everyone's thoughts. And then lastly, you know, as we go through, when someone comes up and speaks about something, I'm going to start asking if anyone else would like to speak on that matter. And if someone raises their hand, at that time, I'll look for someone else if they have a different item to talk about to come up and bring that up first, and then we'll go kind of based off times that we're hearing the most topics in a timely manner. So with that, I'll open up public forum to who would like to join us first. Welcome.
Good New England weather. Hi, I'm Don Sutherland. I'm chair of the Environmental Working Group of the Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee. I'm here to represent the Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee's perspective on Lake Maspinock's use of herbicides to manage plant life. And the Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee urges the board to reject the $55,000 requested expanded use of several hundred gallons of toxic herbicides to be administered by DPW in Lake Maspinock in 2026. We see this as physically and environmentally irresponsible, mainly because this request, it feeds a herbicide treadmill, which doesn't manage life in the long term. It's a short-term fix for an issue. It requires repeated renewal on applications. This is the second application by the groups. The first was in 2024 for over $30,000. And they've done a lot of work, the Lake Maspinock Association, and they have done excellent assessing of the lake's life forms. But when it comes down to this issue, the group feels they're making a big mistake because the chemical, the use of these chemicals isn't designed for the health of the lake. It's not, it's misrepresented if it's dialogued that way. It's meant to harm and destroy life. That's what makes it effective. And it kills not only one form of life, but non-target as well, which isn't often part of the package of dialoguing. So the group from our last, I attended their meeting this year, they assessed the effect of this prior use, and they found that it was effective, but then plant life came back in a surge form. And we've had, you know.
You're at two minutes, Donald, if you want to.
Well, we're willing to work. I mean, the group has a toolbox that they have from the Vegetation Management Plan from 2021, and they have alternatives other than chemicals that we strongly feel we could work with them to manage this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Would you like to speak next? Is this, who wants to speak to that same topic? We got one. All right. So I'm going to have someone else come up to another topic. We'll come back to you. I just want to make sure. Yeah, come on, Ed.
Ed Harrow, H. Spring Lane, speaking as a resident. Firstly, a big kudos to the Hopkinton Fire Department ambulance crew for the wonderful ride they gave me the other night. Secondly, I've had people think that my letter about barrel racing on Main Street was a serious letter. It was written in jest, and it was submitted in jest, and it was not meant to be taken seriously, but it was a little pointed, I will admit. My real reason to be here is e-bikes, and I know that I provided a link to a New York Times article. I have the full article that I will leave here. I have a three-generation history in bicycles. I have a picture of my great aunt and uncle on their trike, tandem trike, in New York, 1880s. My uncle was a bike dealer. My parents met on riding bicycles. The issue of e-bikes in this town, in the state, in the country is uncontrolled. It is the only way, in my opinion, that e-bikes can be rendered quote-unquote "safe" is to require a license, require they be registered, and require they be insured. Putting 12-year-old kids out on e-bikes is crazy. I had an experience on Wood Street in Woodville and the Twist attorneys, and this kid was clearly, when you do something and you're good at it, you know when someone is not good at it. This kid was on the curb. He was riding way far to the right, which you think is where to be, but he was right at a corner, so I never saw him until I got around the corner. If you're on a bike, you need to move out from the corner to maintain your visibility to the people coming up behind you. This is a major, major safety deal. I have pictures of damage done by e-bikes. I'm going to leave all this stuff with you. I have pictures of groups of kids on what we think are e-bikes, but they don't have pedals. They don't qualify as an e-bike, but we have no way to distinguish it. I have the letter that I wrote about the kid in the car accident on front of the Hopkinton Town Hall. I'm done. Thank you very much. Have a lovely night.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Lance, I'll leave all this with you. Anyone else like to speak to e-bikes? Or is there a new topic? If there's a new topic, yeah. Okay. Yeah, you can come up. You can talk about the lake. And can you check if there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. We'll come back to Zoom.
Carol Essler, 16 Oakhurst Road. Let's see, I have two minutes, and what we need is a paradigm shift. This is going to be difficult. Okay, they dumped hundreds of gallons of diquat in our lake. I don't want to go too long on diquat. Toxic, banned in many countries throughout the world, including the entire European Union. I can't believe we put it in our lake. But we could get into chemicals and just play whack-a-mole with other harmful chemicals, so we're not going to do that. The EPA, you can't really trust. One of the reasons why Concord said no to these chemicals in their lakes is because of some doubts and need for more study in terms of endocrine disruption. People always think of cancer first, but endocrine disruption is another concern. We're talking fertility. We're talking birth defects. These are things we're worried about. But if people who want herbicides talk about balance and health, toxic synthetic chemicals do not cause balance and health within a lake. They destroy life forms, maybe zoo plankton, phytoplankton. There are far less shorebirds the year that they put it in. This is not balance and health. This is degrading our ecosystem, is what this approach is doing. Now, there was the toolbox, many of which things have not been used. They've done drawdown. They've done toxic chemicals. Other things should be in the toolbox, such as diver-assisted suction harvesting, small weed harvesting machines, and aeration. These things didn't even make it into the toolbox. And here we are, spending money on a toxic treadmill that in 10 years would be a lot of money, and we could afford some of these useful other tools. So again, it doesn't degrade without sunlight. It's poisoning our lake. We need to talk about healthy biodiversity versus single-year human convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Please come up.
Don Kaiser, Oakhurst Road. To carry that discussion a little further, but I'll start on the Weed Committee. I would probably be a member of that committee if it didn't, their charter didn't read like herbicides are the first choice. People say it's the last choice, last resort. It seems to be the first choice. Thinking about things that we've done in the past that aren't in the toolbox, we've actually brought in a hydro rake before, which will do people's shorelines. It worked very nice. It's not enough to do the Big Basin. Aeration, something we could do. I've seen a wet dredge that I call a muck sucker because it sucks the muck up off the bottom. I think a lot of silting goes on, so I think it's something you'd probably have to do a few years in a row. That's also, doesn't seem to be in the toolbox. But then I thought of today, a number of years ago, there was a gentleman on our lake, Marco, who said he wanted to take an excavator into the middle of the lake and deal with some of the rocks in the lake. We managed the Lake Association to get permission from CONCOM for him to bring an excavator into the lake, and he piled up a bunch of the rocks, and we have an island in the lake now from that. And it occurred to me that he did that as volunteer work. I believe we paid for his diesel fuel. That instead of an eight-foot drawdown some year, maybe we do a 10-foot. And we've got a lot of guys in this town that have bulldozers and backhoes, and maybe we buy their diesel fuel, and maybe we get some volunteer labor. We could actually do a dry dredge in maybe a short period of time and maybe for short money. If we think about building another island, expanding that island, always one of the big costs we're thinking about dry dredging is hauling the material away, and now it's got diquat in it. It may have dioxin from the 40-plus years ago when we put dioxin in the lake. So that might be a channel to look at. I'm concerned about the criteria for this year's chemicals that they're asking money for. They decided not to do an assessment, a survey, in the spring, so I have no idea what the criteria is going to be for doing this herb application or not. We lucked out today. We didn't get snow. We got cold weather. The drawdown may work really well this year. In my 40 years of being here, the best year in terms of the least weeds was after one of the drawdowns we did in 2015, 16. And thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and speak next? Welcome.
Thank you. Kevin Narbone, 14 Hillgrass Drive, Hopkinton. Speaking out as a community member on a press release by Van Ralton in regards to November 14th release. I'm the one who complained last fall to the Select Board, October 1st, over a year ago. My complaint wasn't with the HPD doing a good job and denying the call as being a swatting incident at the high school. My complaint was with the HPD unprepared, executed, well-developed plan and protocol, the protocol that the HP already had written and drilled with the H. Hopkinton Fire Department, the district, and trauma centers. I worked as a safety officer at an employee-run company for many years. We were sold to a national company, so safety, you know, within the, you know, that company, a $2 billion company with 7,000 employees, was really important to me. So facts versus fiction are also really important to me. So after reading the press release, I couldn't help but notice Van Ralton, writing as the acting chief while Joe Bennett was out on vacation, wrote in such a way that it seemed to be suggesting the FBI had conducted an after-action review of everything the HPD had done on October 1st, 2024. That concluded that all the work by the HPD had been done right. Van Ralton's case was reviewed by Special Agent Brian LeBlanc at our request as an action actor review. The case, really, a case? That's incredibly misleading. Why? Because Agent LeBlanc did not in any way review the entire case that Scott claims. And people in this community are also friends with other outside sources. We live in a growing community. I have sources through previous enterprises, previous jobs. I can make phone calls. I can hire people to get facts. So I want to prevent facts, not fiction. Would you like to know what LeBlanc did, in fact, do? I'll tell you what he did. He confirmed he did and didn't do. Before I do that, I want to call your attention. One more thing, Van Ralton's letter.
Kevin, you're at two minutes if you want to finish up.
Yep. Does anybody else want to read? I prepared this, and I think it's really important to close this up.
I understand, but we've got to stick to our schedule.
Okay. Scott said to the Hopkinton Police Department Marines, "committed in transparency. When I tell you that LeBlanc really did do, we'll laugh at this stupidious statement." Remind Mr. Transparency should have been more well-transparent unless there were even a transparency flag around. It turns out the case field agent did assess the HPD actions that day and reviewed the recording itself, not the entire case as being stated. So I bring this up. If you're doing a case review, this is how you do a case review.
Whether it's an incident or accident, a fatality, case reviews are really important to get the facts.
Thank you, Kevin.
So I just ask for correspondence in relation to any misleading misconduct. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
Sabine St. Pierre, One Woody Island. I have to agree with Don. I hope that we are going to continue to get some cold weather before any snow so we have an effective extended drawdown. So I know everyone probably doesn't want to hear that, but I'm hopeful for some solid freezing weather. I'm here on behalf of the LMPA, the Lake Maspinock Preservation Association, and I just wanted to give a little insight into our connection that we have with other boards in the town, and we do work closely with the CIG on, you know, the last, since their inception 10 years ago. We help with the weed surveys. We look for their guidance on what they need us to do as an association for education of the community. We had an awareness campaign that we started this September where we put up a lot of links with the help of Judy Day at CONCOM. She had come and done a presentation at our general meeting about what people can do to keep their waterfronts healthy, how can they prevent unwanted storm runoff that could contribute to the weeds using non-phosphorus fertilizers. So things that we can do as a community to prevent the weed situation. And we had 178 hits on our website in September. We had put lawn signs out, directed people to our website. We have a specific tab called Lake Health, and normally we get about 14 or 15 hits in a month, and we had 178 hits. So it means that people are looking, and we're hopefully educating them. Let's see what else they wanted to quickly talk about. Oh, we have a flyer that I'll give you just so you can see what we do for education. We have a welcome wagon when people move to the lake. We give them a pail with some safety items in it, and also some of these flyers for them to understand, again, what they can do to keep the lake healthy. So I'm going to give that to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabine. So we are just at 6:20, so we're going to hold off on more public forum until we get through the rest of the agenda items. We'll continue it towards the end. All right. So moving on, the next piece is our public forum statement. So we talked about this last week. We're going to try something new. You know, we hear a lot of people that come up to public forum, and the feeling is that they're not being heard and things aren't being answered to. I feel like as we look, you know, from the board's perspective, I think there's a lot of things that get talked about in public forum that we respond to indirectly at future meetings. And, you know, I understand that that might not be as direct as some people would like. So this is an attempt to kind of show what the board's thinking. This isn't really, since everyone sees when the board meets, this isn't the board's, like, opinions on things. It's more just some things that we thought with council made sense to kind of talk about, and people can just get perspective on when the board makes decisions or contemplates something going on in town. There are certain things that the board needs to think about in that, and we just want to bring that type of transparency to this process. So, I mean, the first one is extremely timely. It was just brought up, the swatting incident on several of the past meetings, and I think the original conversation was around, you know, the board not taking that deeply enough. And so, you know, what we did was we went back and looked at what the immediate next steps were. So after that incident on October 1st, the board met on December 3rd of '24 in a public meeting with public safety and school officials to talk about the incidents. It was extensively discussed, the response by school staff and public safety, and the lessons learned. I think the key takeaways were the importance of ongoing preparedness and the fact that we can never do enough in those situations. I think all three departments had the shared opinion that we need to continue to, like, do better in those incidents. So as an additional follow-up to that, since our last meetings, you know, we got feedback from really all three departments. And, you know, I'll start with the schools. You know, Evan Bishop, our superintendent, you know, his opinion was an appropriate response. You know, certainly things to tighten up and to approve upon. One of the ways they're doing that is, you know, they called it the Safety Task Force. You know, police, fire, and schools are now having monthly joint meetings to continue preparedness and response. Our fire chief, Gary Doherty, talked about how 65% of the Hopkinton Fire Department staff is trained in active attack integrative response. They continue to do training beyond that. 300 high school students are trained in the Stop the Bleed training this year, and the Safety Task Force is attending joint training by the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is focused on school and community safety. Police Chief Joe Bennett talked about that same AAIR training, and 100% of the police force is trained in that. All three confirmed, you know, a commitment to continued improvement, more work that needs to be done. I think the next major step is they're targeting a May 1st four-hour tabletop exercise focused on ICS, unified command roles and responsibilities. So again, that's the work that's going on behind the scenes that we don't really hear about on a day-to-day as they continue to improve upon those things. Beyond the swatting incident, you know, we've had several questions around, going back the last couple of meetings, around an update on the Tim Brennan situation. You know, the Select Board, you know, back at the beginning of the year probably took the advice of council, and when that went into arbitration, the board was advised and is still of the opinion that we are going to stay out of that process. We think that process is going to play out on its own, and we look for a conclusion of that, and until that time, the board won't play into it. Moving on, the other big one has obviously been Hillary's pizza. There's been a lot around that. And again, we've talked about that. I think we had two specific Select Board meetings to talk about, like, what's the board's responsibility? We talked about the process, but we felt like it was more important to, you know, identify some of the facts that, you know, council agrees were important for the town to remember as we go through these things and we continue to, you know, adjust our policies. But it was one of the things that, and again, this isn't new. Some of this stuff has been, you know, referenced before, but the Domestic Violence Act of 2014 requires that incidents involving domestic violence, rape, or sexual assault be withheld from public safeties, publicly posted daily log. The log requires that these must be kept in a separate log, which is not a public record, nor shall the entries be disclosed to the public. The preserves of the privacy of victims, the release of this information is not discretionary. Members of the police department who violate the law are subject to penalties that may include imprisonment or fines. And contrary to what has been stated, the information is not concealed or altered. It is strictly confidential. And that is, you know, that is the way to sum up, like, how there's been opinions or accusations that things have been deleted from the logs, and this is the town's response to that. With respect to what information can be released to the public about sex offenders, again, this was an opportunity to kind of just like make sure we're all on the same page when we think about things. Information about Level 1 offenders is confidential and cannot be released to the public. Information about Level 2 offenders may be shared only upon request, and police officers may not proactively release it to the public. And information about Level 3 offenders must be distributed to the community. These restrictions are required by state law. So right now, like, that's where we want everyone to kind of think about how the town has responded to a lot of these things. They're doing it by what, you know, first of all, is the law, and to maintain, you know, a limitation of liability for these things. So again, this was, you know, that's what we had for tonight. We're going to continue to hear what you guys speak about in public forum, but we want to try this as an effort to directly respond to the things that you guys bring up because we do care. It's not always easy to respond. We certainly can't legally right away, but hopefully this helps everyone feel that we are responding as we go through things. So with that, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. And so for tonight, the Select Board will consider the following. We'll consider authorizing the town manager to sign a license and hold harmless agreement with the 26.2 Foundation to facilitate the development of public trails at 53 East Main Street. It will consider appointing Eric Cardy as a traffic constable to a term expiring 6/30/28. And it will consider confirming the town manager's appointment of Jeffrey Wood as Assistant Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer. I think we had, did we have a change in that first one? Do we have a typo?
There's a typo in the license and hold harmless agreement.
Do you mind clarifying?
Sure. In number four of the document, the word "completed" is used instead of, should be contemplated in the last sentence.
Thank you. Before I look for, before we do anything, I'm going to make a motion to, I move to pull out item B separately. I need to recuse myself that one for a family connection, but if we want to start with A and C together, I guess I need a second.
I have a second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now we're going to discuss A and C. Amy, do you want to start? Any thoughts or comments on?
Okay. So we're holding out the constable. Okay. So the, so the, okay, so I don't have any comments about the new town employee and the license to hold harmless for the trails. If we could just get a little bit more explanation for that, I think that would be helpful for the public because I don't recall us ever doing one before.
Joseph Aldega, counsel for the 26.2 Foundation, just in case you have any questions on that.
Just a little bit, what is it and what it will do? Because I think the public is generally supportive.
So the town leases the land to the 26.2 Foundation, future home of the International Marathon Center. While they're working on that, those future plans, the town Trails Committee had an idea to construct some trails on the property, and so that's where.
So we're happy to open the land up for the trails, but our insurance company is requiring us to get the hold harmless agreement from the town. Otherwise, we're going to be liable if somebody breaks in like. So, so again, it's very exciting. The trails that start at this property connect all over the place, so it's a good opportunity.
Okay. It'll be worked on by members of the Trail Committee who are, you know, appointed to the town.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
No, I think I had the same question, just a quick one. So for this one, the Trails Committee is okay and is in sync.
So the Trails Committee are the ones advocating for the trails. We're happy to open up the land and excited about it as well, and hopefully years from now, when the IMC is built, there's going to be a whole trail system with, as part of that, too. But for this initial stage, while it's in the fundraising stage, it'd be a shame not to open the land up to the trails, so.
I'm glad it's happening. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have no other questions. I'll look for a motion for items A and C.
Peter wanted to say something.
As part of the trails.
Peter LaVoy, 21 Hayden Row Street, speaking as the chair of the Trails Committee. And yes, we're advocating for this sort of agreement. Really want to express our appreciation for Elaine for helping push this forward. Obviously helpful on this particular parcel of land, but there are also other trails across private land that need this sort of license agreement, so really appreciate your help on getting this in place. So, thanks.
And just so we're on the same page, it's not a license agreement. It's a hold harmless agreement. We are not licensing anything to the Trails Committee, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe and Peter.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, A and C.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any final thoughts? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. And we are, we're going to have to move beyond. We don't have a quorum to do item B.
There is an exception.
I think abstain from the vote, that should be sufficient.
Okay. Perfect. So then I'm going to recuse myself.
Well, I think if you just stay as a member of the board and just.
I think it's the rule of necessity because there's only three of us.
Okay.
You can be here, but you can abstain.
Perfect.
And I think we all trust that you can. And I think we all trust that you can treat the matter fairly, right? You feel like you can treat it fairly. Okay.
So, the second one is traffic constable appointment. The Select Board will consider appointing Eric Carty as a traffic constable to a term expiring 6/30/2028.
Second. Okay.
So...
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
All right. The motion moves.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on, next, the Select Board will consider promoting Robert Ekros to the rank of Sergeant in the Police Department. Would the Chief and Deputy Chief please join us? And the Sergeant?
Through the chair, welcome and good evening. I'm glad everybody got here safe. Thank you for the time to, to consider a promotion tonight. Promotion is very important within an organization. This is a funded position, and we have a vacancy that we work through a process. Our process is governed by a negotiated agreement that was negotiated between the town during contract negotiations, and that was followed. Deputy, you want to talk about the process?
Sure. So, it's all outlined throughout the contract, and the process starts with an application for those interested patrolmen who meet the qualifications. Then we have a test put on by an outside vendor that is scored, and any officer who scores a 70 or above moves on to the interview round. The interview is conducted with any of those who pass. This year, it was done with myself, a deputy chief from Franklin, and Jessica from HR. That portion of the process is scored, and ultimately accounts for 40% of their final score. The written test counts for 40% of their final score, and the final 20% is classified under Chief's assessment, which involves their seniority, performance evaluations, what they've done within the department, any other activities that they've performed as an officer, and that accounts for 20%. Those scores are then tallied by HR as a blind score that nobody within the agency is privy to, and those final scores are then posted.
Usually we let you kind of have a chance to introduce yourself.
Through the chair, I'd like to introduce you to Robert Ekros. He's a candidate that came out on top. He's well-qualified. He's very active within the department. He serves many roles in training, field training, and he's actually the senior patrol officer right now, so I set you out. It's all you now.
Yeah, so I am Robert Ekros. I've came to Hopkinton about seven and a half years ago now. Love working here. I've loved working here since I started. Like Chief mentioned, I am one of the field training officers, so that's when we bring in brand-new hires, and then they're riding around in the car with us. We're showing them everything from the roads to, you know, making arrests, going through the cell area, investigations, all that kind of stuff. So I've actually done that for 20-plus officers now, so I got a lot of experience with that. And that's kind of the supervisor before the supervisor, because they're green, they're right out of the academy or a transfer from somewhere else. So, we have to show them how to be an officer, as well as an officer in Hopkinton. So I took that on and really ran with it, you know, doing 20-plus officers. It was, it was a lot, but it was, I was happy to do it because I want them to be trained highly, and I think I meet that standard, and I really put a lot of effort into it. So I enjoy that. Recently, I became a ballistic shield instructor. We have shields that we carry in the car. Became an instructor for that, so definitely happy to train the officers on that. And just anything that I can get involved with, I do a lot of the social media, our posts that we make on Facebook, I get involved with that. Health and wellness team member, I get involved with that. So with the help of Chief Bennett, we got a lot of new gym equipment for the department. Recently, we did a lot of testing for the officers, so they could see if they had any, you know, blood issues or anything like that, any cardiac issues. We actually had a company come in. We were on the assault bike. We were all hooked up with the oxygen and doing all that. So from the help of Chief Bennett, we were able to do that and make sure that our officers are as healthy as they can be. So, I do as much as I can with the department, and now I'm just looking for that, that next step, and I'm excited to do that.
Perfect. Well, we appreciate you talking. I'll open up to the board. Thoughts? Questions? You want to start?
Well, first of all, thank you. Great to hear that we are completing the leadership plan that you were anticipating and had envisioned some time ago. And this gives our police force the necessary strength and maturity. That's the goal. So I'm happy that we are on that path. And I have interacted with Officer Ekros a few times, very few times, on Ash Street and other places, and was really, had the pleasure of, and impressed with his professional demeanor and all the good work he puts in for Hopkinton. I think for everyone's understanding, Chief, you mentioned it. How would you, what are the key roles and what are the kind of overall leadership responsibility you put on this role? And how, in your view, Mr. Ekros comes out as outstanding candidate for this?
Sure. So, Patrol Sergeant really is the most important position in an organization. Your first line of leadership does so much for the community, so much for the officers, and so much for the mission of the department. So I see what Rob will bring to it is, as far as community, he understands our posture in the community, our commitment to service. He's been delivering on that, and I have every confidence that he'll hold his officers accountable. One of the other, the other aspect is being there for the officers. Rob is committed to wellness, he's committed to the department, and I think he'll serve as a mentor, a trainer, and he has a very solid understanding of our expectations and standards. And so that ties into the department. So, he'll be able to support the officers on calls, to ensure that they're, they're meeting all the standards, but also support them as a mentor and communicating to them in that way. But finally, as the organization, knowing the rules, the guidelines, and all that. It will, it kind of gives you the total package of what we need from a first-line supervisor in our organization. That's a sergeant.
Excellent. Thank you. That all makes sense. And I would also add that I have also observed Mr. Ekros on various community events and seen him in action in helping build the community relationship or working for the kids with the pizza and the last day of school and other events, organizing those, and I'm very impressed with the leadership he has demonstrated. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate all the background that you provided, and I'm really, I'm really pleased that we have people that have been here a long time that are ready to take the next step. I know we have a lot of newer officers who are not very experienced, so we really need some people who have been here a while like yourself to step up and take more responsibility. And your list of certifications is impressive, so that's great. And then I wondered if you might be able to tell us a little bit about some of these certifications you've done, like, and what you learned from, if you want to pick one?
Sure.
What you learned from it.
I have those in front of me.
From Hopkinton.
Let's see. What would be a good one? Yeah, where do we have that one? Okay. Yeah, so nonviolent crisis intervention, certified as an instructor with that. So that was recent, a few of us, including dispatchers, firefighters. We did a class where we learned, and it's not specific to law enforcement, that's why we had the dispatchers as well as the firefighters. And it was intervening in situations where someone might be in a state of crisis, but you don't want to go, you know, sometimes the police have to go hands-on, but it's kind of talking them through things. So it actually went through the progression of, you know, when you're at the talking stage, kind of seeing what they're giving off, what their body language is saying. So that was actually a three-day course, and we went through, and at first we were just kind of learning all the things, so how to talk to them, how to keep the room safe, how to keep other people safe. And then it kind of escalated to, okay, if they do start to do these things, how can we get other people out of the room? How can we get them out of that situation? And it was interesting to not go from a law enforcement standpoint, but from more of just that community caretaker. So that was really good, three days of that. It was pretty hands-on. It was more strenuous than a lot of us thought it was going to be. You know, at the end of the day, we were sweating doing some of the techniques that we were learning, but it was all stuff that was, you know, very safe. It wasn't, you know, anything like super physical, but it was just learning how to intervene in situations like that. And in the future, we hope to be instructors for that and maybe teach some of the other departments in town and help them out with that as well, because that's such a big thing, seeing people that are in mental crisis. We definitely want to be, be able to help with that, not just calling us, but giving people the tools themselves to be able to work through that as well.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and I think it's very interesting to the public, because, you know, modern policing has changed a lot over the years. People may not even know that you do that sort of training.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Perfect. As far as questions, my only one is for the Chief. We always ask, is this part of the budget already?
The answer is yes, and it's in next year's budget as well.
Perfect. Yeah, no, no other questions? You know, I think, especially in like this line of work, you know, promotions like this, you know, there's not, there's not a million of them in front of you. I think it's a very important thing for you, your family, the department. I think, you know, what it, what it says, to have someone that's been in town for a while now, move up in the department, continue what we have going. You know, I personally, I've spoken about it multiple times, to see the community involvement the last couple of years. I think it's, the department's doing a really nice job with that, being out during public events and being present and working with the communities and the children in the community. So, I just hope to see that continue. So, thank you. With that...
I move to promote Robert Ekros to the rank of Sergeant in the Hopkinton Police Department.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Sergeant. Yeah, we'll do a picture. Is he doing a pinning first?
I'll come.
Yeah. We'll get out of the picture for the pin.
Rachel, it's my pleasure to give you this, to give you a Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Ten.
Yeah.
All right. Come on, man. Lieutenant? Smart ass.
All right.
Yes.
That's right.
It's not getting everyone.
All right.
All right.
It's not getting everyone.
All right.
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 Thank you.
For coming, congratulations.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you for the reminder.
So next, the select board will consider a presentation by the Lake Masparinoc Weed Management Control Advisory Group regarding weed management in the lake.
So remember all those good feelings. Keep those good feelings. Welcome back. All right. Good afternoon. Joseph Aldega, I am Chair of the Citizen Input Group for the Lake Masparinoc Weed Management Control Group. Thank you for your time. So I am here to update the board on the weed control efforts and also to speak in support of the DPW's budget request of $55,000 to facilitate the continuing efforts to continue, I'm sorry, to control the weeds in Lake Masparinoc. We have, in addition to Sabine, who is Chair of the LMPA, we also have another member of the Control Group, Paula Garland, who also resides on the lake. And I should start by saying that the members of the Citizen Input Group, most of us reside on the lake. Now I think all but one reside on the lake. And we certainly don't want to do anything that's going to harm the lake. And I respect the comments from the other folks who have spoken in opposition to what we're proposing for the Weed Control Group. I respect their comments because I think we all share a common goal, which is to keep the lake as healthy as possible. We obviously don't want to put anything into the lake that is going to endanger anyone or, at least as far as we're concerned, is going to make the lake less healthy. So just to recap a little bit, because I think, I'm not sure you were here last time we were here, right? So in spring of 24, we did obtain CONCOM approval to have herbicide treatment applied because the measures taken in advance of that simply were ineffective. They just didn't work anymore. And the primary tool in the toolbox until then had been the annual drawdown and the every third year extended drawdown. To make the drawdown work, you have to have an extended period of cold weather without snow cover, right? So when the lake is at its lowest, like it is right now, you have to have weeks of cold, frosty weather, below freezing. That's going to kill the weeds. So we just haven't, we moved on to the lake in 2015, 16. You heard Don Kaiser mention, that's the last recollection he have of a good drawdown. That's when we moved on to the lake. And the drawdown was fantastic. We had like six weeks of cold weather without snow cover. We haven't had that for 10 years. We're not, so far, we're not having it this year either. The lake, if you've drawn, driven by the lake, it's very low. This is the low drawdown that we get approved every third year. But last week it was 60, right? This weather is okay. We're not getting a lot of snow cover, but it's supposed to be cold, but then it's going to warm back up. We're just not getting the conditions to dampen the weeds like we need to by the drawdown. So in the materials that have been provided to you folks and is made public, so you have the results of the survey, the post-treatment survey from August 24. You also have the materials that we presented to CONCOM last time we went before them in March of 2025. So this was earlier this year when we went before CONCOM and said, look, we're not proposing herbicide treatment again for this past summer that we just went through because we wanted to see what the effects were in a second year after having done the herbicide treatment. And unfortunately, although the herbicide treatment worked remarkably well, we had no weeds that summer, the targeted weeds, but it didn't carry over into the second year. We were hoping for a strong drawdown. It didn't happen last winter. So this summer, the invasive weeds were back. And you got to understand that you've heard comments from some of the opponents about desert and a vacuum, and we're just making it a barren lake. That's absolutely not the case. You read, don't take my word for it, read the report. The herbicides that are applied are very targeted to just the invasive weeds. The weeds that were killed were the invasive milfoil and the fanwort and the, I forget the other, the pond weed, right? The invasive weeds. There's plenty of weeds in the lake, even right after we did the treatment. For Don to swim in, he talks about how he likes to swim in the weeds. I do too. There's plenty of weeds. We don't kill everything. The fish were plentiful. The waterfowl were plentiful. You've heard anecdotes about, oh, it seems like there were less fish and less birds. It's just not the case. So it really worked very well, but we never thought that it was going to be a one and done. So we are looking to do it again. If you look at the conservation presentation materials, because a lot of what you've heard tonight and in past meetings is how we're dumping hundreds of gallons in, and the sediment is just accumulating herbicide or toxic waste and all that stuff. And, and again, I'm trying to be respectful, but at the same time, some of what you're hearing are just misrepresentations. So to give you a flavor as to what and how it's treated, if you look at page six of the conservation materials, so the herbicides used, so it's a 50 acre area, right? Because we're just applying it to the north basin because that's where the shallow water is. So the sunlight gets through to the sediment and it creates the weed growth. South of Sandy Beach, we don't have that problem. We didn't, we're not looking to apply herbicide there. We didn't apply herbicide there last time, just because you don't have the weed growth. It's in the area that frankly, used to be a swamp, and we're trying to stop it from going back to being a swamp, but it's the north basin. The water is six feet deep, ton of mud on the bottom. And if you look at the dosage, right? So you had Tribune applied at one gallon per acre and Aquithal, one of these is Dyquat, I forget which, let's see, the Tribune is a Dyquat. So you had 60 gallons of Dyquat over 50 acres. So it was a gallon an acre. The Aquithal, three gallons an acre, right? And the studies and the folks who put the treatment in, right? They all have the same consensus, which is it is so minimally applied. It's quickly spread out in the water and that there's none of it falling through to the bottom other than, you know, you are killing the weeds. So, but it's not just dumping in hundreds of gallons into one concentrated area. So look at that total treatment, right? 185 total of chemicals over 50 acres. So there was also talk about the toolbox. And again, I feel like we talk about this all the time, but if you look on page five of those same materials, you'll see here is the toolbox that everybody's talked about and that we got approved by CONCOM. So the drawdown is the first one. We've already talked about how that alone isn't effective. We're going to keep doing the drawdown. It's the easiest mechanism to kill the weeds. It has some effect. It's just not sufficient for the north basin. The extended drawdown we talked about. The other four devices in the toolbox, benthic barriers, hand harvesting, mechanical harvesting, and herbicide treatment. So for the north basin, those other three are not feasible or cost effective for the area that we're talking about. So harvesting would be wonderful. Dredging would be wonderful, but you can't dredge that area. Topographically, it doesn't work. It's full of boulders. You heard somebody mention Marco with his bulldozer going out there. That was before we moved on to the lake. My understanding was he got in big trouble for doing that. I don't think he had any approval. He just unilaterally pulled his backhoe out there. We would love for that to happen. I would love for the lake to be dredged. We only got about five feet at the end of our dock. I would love 10 feet, right? And that would solve the problem. We had estimates of what do we take to dredge? And dredging doesn't last a long time. You'd have to do it every two or three years, right? Because the sediment still builds up. Million bucks to do the dredging for a year. And you need someplace to put all the dredge material. So sure, you pile it up on Sandy Beach or on the parking lot. You're not going to use that for the whole year. And then you need someone to haul it away. So, and, and mechanical harvesting, same thing. It's not, that's like mowing the lawn. We talked to people. The reason it's in the toolbox is because we went out and we surveyed what alternatives were there to herbicide. Mechanical harvesting is like mowing the lawn. All you're doing is taking the tops off of the weeds. They grow back. You would just have to keep mowing the lawn. It's not feasible. It's not cost effective. Hand harvesting, small areas, sure, maybe in front of your dock. Benthic barriers, same thing. You can put, these are just the big barriers, sort of the size of this room that you can buy online, and you could just put it in front of your dock and it will cover the soil. It's not feasible for 50 acres where the weeds are prevalent in that entire 50 acres. So again, I'm trying to be respectful of the folks who speak in opposition to this. We are doing our best to minimize runoff into the lake. The LMPA has been doing a marvelous job of educating folks to make sure we're minimizing what's going into the lake. A good sign of that, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, but a good sign of that is we get the lake tested for phosphorus every year, which is the number one problem of lawn fertilizer. The lake has incredibly low phosphorus. So it's not, everybody likes to point through, oh, everybody has green lawns.
It's not fertilizer.
But it's, it's not being caused by fertilizer. It might be caused by boats coming in from other lakes. It'd be wonderful if we had a boat washing station at the parking lot for Sandy Beach. Again, where's that money going to come from? It's not feasible. We try to police. We have signs, but it's not a feasible way to address this problem alone. So, so what's being proposed, we think, is as limited as possible. It's spot treatment, really only the area. We're not talking about treating the entire lake. And what we're concerned with is, and what we saw before we treated in 2024, is the lake starting to close in because of the invasive weeds. There's an entire portion now down near lake shore, I think it's Downey Place, that we used to be able to take kayaks and stuff in there. And you can't anymore because the invasive weeds have gotten so bad. We didn't treat that area. It's almost like a bird preserve now. And we're not proposing to treat that area. But you're going to see the invasive weeds encroaching, 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 and eventually closing off the lake. We're trying not to have that happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know, Paula, if you want to speak as well?
Well, I was just going to say that we have done, we've either done or we've researched in detail every item in the toolbox. And like he was saying, if we, if you cut the weeds, it causes it to grow more. Like when you cut your lawn, when you mow your lawn, it becomes thicker. And the same thing happens if you hand harvest. You spread the weeds. And besides, we can't hand harvest 50 acres. But the phosphorus thing is absolutely true. It's not from, from lawn fertilizers. So.
So I also want to stress.
It's not very, it's shallow. And so you've got the sunlight and then the weeds grow up towards the sun. So that's what I think the problem is.
See, and I just want to remind the board as well that we're here not just updating you, but we need budget approval. But this is just the first step, right? Because if in February or March, it looks like we haven't had the winter that would cause the drawdown to be effective, the plan is to go in front of CONCOM, and we need CONCOM's approval before we do anything. We don't need CONCOM approval if you folks moot the decision because you don't approve the proposed treatment, but that's, that's the steps that are necessary. We got rid of the spring survey. Typically, we've gone out and done spring and fall surveys of the weeds. Because the spring survey was too early, there was never any weed growth anyway, because we were doing it at the end of May, early June, mid-June. That's not when the weed growth happens. That's when it's just starting. That's why you apply the herbicide right then. So you catch the weeds as they start growing. You minimize the debris that's going down into the settlement, sediment, because you're killing the weeds before they start. And that's when you got to hit them. So, so anyway, so this is just the first step. We still have to go in front of CONCOM, even if you folks approve the budgeting item. So.
Thank you. And I think that's an important thing to call out, right? Like, we're going to be focused on the budget, like for the application, right? That's step one. We're in the middle of that process now as a town. And then, of course, CONCOM has the ultimate decision on what treatment gets used. I've got some other questions, but I'll let my board members kind of start first. Amy, do you?
I don't think I have any particular questions for the weeds committee. I appreciate the long presentation. And I think, like as Joe was saying, we'll hear from CONCOM later. We'll hear from the DPW later about the budget and the need and everyone else's recommendation. And I assume the Samble Green Committee will, we'll hear from them as well. You know, because I think, you know, herbicides, I think, make us all nervous. And sometimes we do understand other things have been tried and that that's the last resort. But yeah, we have to all do our due diligence. And it's, we're not really the deciders of the, whether we use herbicides or not, just of the budget.
Right.
And just, there was a comment made, and I wish, I don't know if it was Mr. Sunderland or if it was Don, but saying, I think it was the other Don, who's a neighbor, and I see him all the time. We get along and stuff. But I think he said something about he didn't join the committee because our predisposition was to herbicides. My predisposition is the exact opposite. I hate the thought of chemicals. And we would welcome his input on the committee, but you know, we're trying to do what we can to keep the lake healthy with minimum intrusiveness. So.
Yeah, and along the same line, I think you articulated the scope well. We're gonna, probably gonna talk about the budget and as the immediate next step, and then would wait for the CONCOM to analyze and give us their insights as well. And fully understand, I mean, herbicides are not risk-free. We all realize that. And how can we make it manageable, targeted, while we solve a real world problem, which is, we want to also make sure the lake is usable. It stays nice, beautiful, and recreational as it is, and people take advantage of the natural resources that we have there. How do we balance it? How do we take advantage of the lake, maintaining and making it usable without, you know, harming it for long term for the natural habitats, for the water? And putting in chemicals, of course, sounds not very promising for long term. But we'll, we'll wait for more information and insights. And I appreciate putting together all the information. This is very helpful. And I also appreciate how you approached it with the surveys and with the consulting groups and kind of targeted application. Those are all, I think, a good indicator that you are all very careful and very, I think, caring about what you're doing and making sure you are actually attacking the problem and also managing the risk along the way. We just need to weigh in how and where kind of the balance point is. One thing I noticed on the kind of background timeline, so two questions related to that. One is, I see in 2020, Conservation Commission denies NOI for herbicide treatment. What was the reason and what has changed today? And second is, in 2024, that treatment that was implemented, it was just a year ago. So why again in 2025? What was the?
Yeah, so the treatment was spring of 24, right? So then we skipped spring of 2025. So this proposed treatment would be for spring of 2026. So, and we felt pretty good that we made it, you know, skipping a year because we weren't sure how long the treatment would last. And it's interesting because we got rid of, and Sabine knows all the names of the weeds, as she reminds me all the time, but we got rid of entirely the type of milfoil that we were attacking in spring of 24. So what's, and I think it was Mr. Sunderland that said, we created a vacuum and, you know, something always fills the vacuum. So a different type of milfoil came back. It's, it's a bad one, still invasive and stuff, but different type. So we were successful in knocking one down or out, and now another type has come back. So we never expected it to be one and done forever. But we were pretty happy that we were able to at least skip a year before coming back and seeking herbicide again. With respect to CONCOM, so, and I don't want to speak for them, but my understanding was they wanted to see a couple of things. One was, they wanted to see that, you know, with the LMPA, that steps are really being taken to sort of minimize what was going into the lake and that other steps were being taken to educate and minimize and buffer zones, right? That CONCOM is very into. So they really wanted to stress that. So we really, and I say we, LMPA, really took that by the horns and have done a great job on putting more out there, really talking to people. We stress it in all the meetings and stuff. And I think that helped convince CONCOM that we're not just looking at this as a panacea for not being responsible for the other things. And then the other thing is, is we took CONCOM, and I invite all of you, we took the CONCOM members out on the lake a few times. And I don't know if Mr. Harrow was still here. He left. But he, he came out on my boat. And they all came out on the boat and they looked so that they could get a feel for what we were talking about and how targeted was what we were proposing. That, you know, it really is a north basin problem, and we're trying to be very targeted. So I'm not sure there was a change of personnel on CONCOM, but I think it was, we were able to change their perception as to how we were trying to be careful caretakers of the lake and not just saying, you know, dump all this garbage in. So.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I'm sure residents would be interested to understand the chronology as you present it. So that makes sense. One other question I was wondering, do you, I saw the cost comparison. And again, obviously, you've done a lot of good analysis and put in a lot of thoughtful work. I appreciate that. Now, looking at the cost analysis, the herbicide approach is about 50K a year. Now, we did it in 24, skipped 25, and it sounds like we have to do again in 2026. But at that rate, we will soon be kind of evening out the cost of other options at some point, dredging or other options that you mentioned. Have we done that analysis, the long-term cost benefit analysis and the environmental impact? In other words, if the dredging helps for five years or eight years and costs a million versus herbicide eventually, hopefully not, we end up doing every other year or every year and spend 680. It's pretty close.
It's actually pretty easy because the limited amount of herbicide we're talking about, I think the treatment by solitude came in at like $32,000. So the other costs in that 50 were it's like $10,000 for the consultants, right? The DPW employs. And I forget what the other five was, but it's in, it's in my letter and support, right? But the treatment itself is maybe 30, 35,000. And even if you think of that being spent, and hopefully it doesn't have to be, but you know, every other year, right? 10 years. 10 years, that's like $350,000, let's say, or $400,000. The cost of dredging, right? Because, and remember, you got a feasibility issue too. If you've driven by Lake Maspinock, you see the North Basin, which is where we have to treat. You can't walk five feet without hitting a boulder, right? And, and probably somebody's propeller that hit one of those boulders. So, hey, so you, it's not an easy lake to dredge, right? Because first you have to do something about the topography. What are you going to do about the boulders, right? I don't know that the state is ever going to approve us bringing a backhoe in there and moving the boulders. I think they're not even, they're not even thrilled about doing the drawdowns, never mind scraping the bottom, right? To clean out the boulders. And even if you could do that, the estimates that we got about dredging, right? Even if it was a perfectly smooth bottom, was like a million bucks to dredge. And, and then you got to dump it and let it dry and haul it away and all that stuff. And even that wouldn't last more than a year or two. Because, because you're not going to dredge six feet down. So it's still going to be, the bottom's still going to be reachable by the sunlight. So after a couple of years, you're still going to have the weeds. And, and don't forget, with the herbicide treatment that we're targeting on there, it's not just the cost. We're leaving behind the healthy ecosystem. So you'd think the Sustainability Committee is unhappy about us targeting, like, no one disputes our invasive weeds. I'm curious how they would feel if we were just going to scrape it and make it look like a skateboard park, right? Where it's just a bare bottom. You're not going to get approval for that anyway. And I wouldn't want to do that, right? So, so it is, I think, a dramatic cost difference, but it's also, nobody's going to let you just scrape the lake.
Understood. It's a complex problem. And again, there's no easy solution, obviously.
Right. Right. There's no perfect solution.
And I also looked up, and it's unfortunate, but I saw there were almost 240 applications across the state of herbicides in other lakes and other water resources for the similar reason. And that is scary because we are getting chemicals more and more in the water. And then we end up getting PFAS, different source probably, but in many other issues with the water. So how do we actually solve it long-term is a challenge for all of us. And more, I think, thoughtful work and head to get into it. But at the same time, we do need to solve the problem. Because if we don't solve the weeds today, it's going to eat up the lake eventually or it's going to also create other problems, make it unusable and also probably inhabitable for many, many of the natural inhabitants today. So again, I'm not an expert. I don't know what's the overall solution, but those are the balancing acts that we need to look at. And I think you have done a good job in collecting a lot of good information and doing the initial efforts. And good luck with CONCON and let's see how and what it looks like. I would emphasize on finding the long-term kind of analysis. And also, I didn't see any, if there are any long-term ecological indicators that you are using, or maybe it's a good time to start using as a baseline or benchmark that what are changing that we may not see on a day-to-day basis, but over long-term has changed, has been changing or is going to change. So we can really find a good threshold that.
Right. The consultant that we were using since I've been on the committee, Dave Mitchell retired last year. So now we have Aquatic Resources, they mentioned in the letter, ARC. But we were, just to give you a comparison, and Dave Mitchell was great. But these folks are really good and really professional. So they have their own boat. They have all this fancy equipment. And we do 10 or 11 stations. That's our, historically, we're checking 10 or 11 spots around the whole lake. They do 79. So they're very comprehensive. And I think they'll be, they've only been on board a year. But I think they'll be very helpful in creating that baseline that you're talking about. So it's pretty good.
Thank you.
I think we're probably not taking, we do have a hand raised on Zoom, but we're probably not taking comments at this point.
No, it's not open public comments. I mean, I think from my opinion, this was extremely helpful. I know there's multiple factors that we need to think about. The board's going to continue to look at this as we work through the budget process. Like, I think we discussed, we'll hear from the Sustainable Green Committee. We'll hear from the DPW. We'll weigh all of this and we'll look towards what's the best solution for Hopkinton Lake Maspinock. But I appreciate you guys coming and walking through this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also looked at fish that will eat the weeds. But then with the fish, we looked at, you can bring in some fish, some kind of fish that will eat the weeds, but it also eats all the other fish.
Oh.
And the people. Thank you.
It's really nice. Is this yours?
Different problem.
But is it P R N R something? We don't want that.
You shut the mic off.
Thank you both. Next, the Select Board will consider voting to opt into the PACE loan program administered by Mass Development. Program helps commercial and industrial property owners finance energy improvements. Funding is from private capital and is paid back via lien with the repayment passed through the town from the borrower to the capital provider. No town funds are used to fund the program. The program is an economic development tool that is available in several communities in Massachusetts. Elaine, do you want to walk us through this one to start?
Sure. And as you just mentioned, it's a program that the town can opt into to make these loans available to property owners. And it would occur if there is a, a project and if there's a private equity funder who's available to fund the improvement. So the town can opt in, but it may never see a project. But it makes the town available for, for this loan program. And this was brought to us by Julia Chun, our Sustainability Economic Development and Equity Program Manager. And she brought this to us and we met with Mass Development. They described the program. And it sounds like something that could be helpful to commercial and industrial property owners to make energy improvements. And we do have Julia, I believe, on Zoom and perhaps someone from Mass Development as well to answer any questions about the program. The town serves as like a pass-through for the repayment to the private equity company.
Perfect. Julia, you out there?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Welcome. We can see you.
Okay, great. I can see myself as well. I'm just going to take a quick second to share this presentation.
Okay.
There we go. Can you all see that?
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that you folks can see this.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So as Elaine shared, this program was actually brought to us by the Sustainable Green Committee, who did some research. We have nonprofits and businesses who approach us looking to do energy updates. These can oftentimes be very costly and sometimes cannot be covered by traditional loans. And so this program is run by Mass Development at the state level. And it is, as you will later see, passed by several different states as well as cities and towns in Massachusetts. So a little bit about Mass Development. They are a quasi-governmental agency. They are the Commonwealth's Development Finance Agency and Land Bank. They work with various businesses, nonprofits, financial institutes, as well as cities and towns to stimulate economic growth through programs like this. They also work as a liaison between banks and capital investment to spur economic development at the municipal level. And in FY '25, they financed and managed 409 projects, generating over $4.65 billion in the state economy. So we are very glad to have them as partners. This particular program has several benefits, both to property owners as well as the municipality. As you all know, a significant goal of ours in this year is job creation as well as attracting and retaining our existing businesses, as well as sustainability and decarbonization of those buildings. And so the PACE program allows commercial property owners to finance energy improvements. Instead of taking out traditional loans, they're repaid through property taxes. And instead of those transferring between property owners, they transfer with the property. The loans are also existent for 10 to 30 years as opposed to the five to 10 traditional loan. And they qualify based on the property and not the borrower. And so this is very beneficial to property owners. There's no long-term recourse in financing, as well as no new debt on the balance sheet. So in terms of financial ratios, it can be more beneficial to them. So currently, 32 states, including DC, have active commercial PACE programs. And so it is required that states have this program passed for towns and cities to opt in. 40 states have enabled legislation. And throughout the country, $9.7 billion have been financed for projects since June 2025. So it is a relatively new program, but we have seen several towns and cities in Boston, sorry, in Massachusetts, take advantage of this program. This is just a slide showing the states that have opted into PACE. So I'll skip through that. And in Massachusetts, the PACE program was launched in 2020. The Mass Development is the program administrator. And so we work with them in terms of connecting businesses with the private lenders. And PACE information, as well as financing documents, are all on their website. And so they are the primary project managers for this program. This is a pretty helpful flow of how the program is operated. Essentially, what happens is the property owner will come to the town and they will say that they want to install new energy improvements. This could be a variety of improvements such as solar panel implementation, changes to HVAC, insulation in windows or roofing, and then improvements to the water efficiency. Once that happens, the municipality will bill and collect betterment assessments, which then goes to the MDFA, paying the agent who receives and disperses the betterment assessment. And then the capital provider finances the improvement and then gets paid through the betterment assessment that the municipality bills and collects. These are some examples of types of buildings that are covered by this program. So for commercial, anything from office buildings to restaurants, manufacturers, and malls are covered. Housing is unfortunately not covered unless it is multifamily housing. So if the housing unit has five units or more in the complex, it can be covered through this program. And nonprofits such as the YMCA, Bay Path Humane Society, which is in Hopkinton, schools, and healthcare buildings are also covered by the PACE loan program. As I mentioned earlier, there are several kinds of energy improvements that are covered through this program. Things such as HVAC system improvements, lighting, energy recovery and redistribution systems, solar panels, geothermal, and solar hot water are all examples of projects that would be covered under this program. These are a few examples of projects that PACE has covered in the past. So this is a building that, I believe, is in Greendale, Mass. The amount of financing was $450,000. As you can see, the term limits are very long. So this was 20 years for $450,000. And there were several different improvements made from LED lighting, recovery ventilation, and electrification of space heating. This is a larger example, and I believe this was the first project done in Boston in 440 McClellan Highway. Also 20 years for the financing term and $787,523. The final example. So as you can see, there have been significant projects that have been covered under this project. We have presented this to the Economic Development Advisory Board as well as the Sustainable Green Committee. Both committees have voiced their support and voted in favor to support this program being voted on by the Select Board today.
Awesome. I think that would, thanks. Sorry.
Yeah, sure. I'll just quickly go over the next steps. This is, again, I think I went over the key elements of how the PACE is operated. But the next steps would essentially be municipal opt-in. So the town manager's office would have to sign in to opt into this program. And then there would be a vote from all of you.
Perfect. Thanks, Julia. That was very helpful. I guess my first question is, would this being, would the town acting as like a pass-through, do we have the resources to like actually manage this if, if a lot of people take us up on it?
Yeah. So thanks for that question. We did a presentation with John Neese. And he's also in favor of us moving forward with this program. As we mentioned before, we do have some neighboring communities such as, just taking a list at the towns, Westboro, Berlin, Bellingham, all have these programs. And we have yet to see a project funded around us. And so it's not something that happens annually or even biannually. It's just something we want to have in place in case a project comes forward. And we do have the staffing capacity at this time to move forward.
Yes. I confirm, yes. She did speak with John Neese, yes.
All right. Perfect. Amy, you want to start? Questions?
No, I mean, it seems like a good program. It looks like it's minimal administrative cost for us. And it seems like it would be a benefit to businesses. Yeah, so if somebody wanted to take an old building downtown and get some insulation and energy improvements, it seems like a great use. We also have some older condo developments in towns. Maybe they could benefit, you know? And then, of course, there's the Marathon Center, there's the YMCA Historical Society. Like, it just seems like there could be, I don't know if many people will take advantage, but it doesn't seem to be any drawback to, to moving forward.
Perfect.
Yeah, and same line. And Julia, thank you for promoting this and bringing this to this level. Certainly, it adds to the toolkit and makes our economic development program, you know, more attractive with another tool for our commercial entities essentially to add energy systems, more efficient energy systems at no cost and no cost to, no cost financing and no cost to the town. So it aligns very well with our Sustainable Green program as well as our economic development strategy. So I really like it. Thank you again for the work. And I would love to move forward with it as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Great, thank you all.
Yeah, I really echo that. I have no additional questions, Julia. I think this is a great thing. It could be a benefit to a lot of, you know, parts of the community. So appreciate you putting this together. I think we need, we need a lengthy motion on this one.
Okay. See document.
Is it just this on the back of the? Correct. Okay. Okay. It's very long, though.
This one?
Yes.
I move the motion that the Hopkinton Select Board hereby approves the municipality participating in PACE Massachusetts pursuant to the PACE Act and authorizes the town manager to enter into a PACE Massachusetts municipal assessment and assignment agreement with Mass Development pursuant to which the municipality will agree to. One, levy PACE betterment assessments and impose PACE betterment assessment liens on benefited properties located in the municipality in the amounts determined by Mass Development to be sufficient to repay the PACE financing. Two, assign the PACE betterment assessment liens to Mass Development, which Mass Development may in turn assign to the providers of the PACE financing, each capital provider, as collateral for such PACE financing. Three, include on-the-property tax bills for the benefited properties, the installment payments necessary to repay the PACE betterment assessments in the amounts and at the times as determined by Mass Development. Four, collect and pay over to Mass Development or its designee the PACE betterment assessment installment payments as and when collected. And five, enforce to the extent required by the agreement the PACE betterment assessments and liens. The agreement to be substantially in the form presented to this meeting with such changes, modifications, and insertions as the town manager may approve as being in the best interest of the municipality. The collector treasurer of the town or such other town agency as may be designated in the agreement is authorized to levy such PACE betterment assessments and impose the PACE betterment assessment liens on behalf of the town without further authorization by this board.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any final thoughts?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. So thank you again, Julia.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate your support. Thank you all. I appreciate your support.
On this, on behalf of this, yeah, Sustainable Green. Yep.
Thanks, Joe.
Welcome, Jeff.
So Jeff Rowland, Chair, Sustainable Green Committee. I just want to thank you for your support for this. We're excited to get PACE loans to this point. When we started researching it, back when we were learning about the specialized code and bringing that to town meeting, we learned about this option. And the committee did our research, backed this, brought it to Julia. Julia and I brought it to the Economic Development Advisory Board. So it's really great. We see this as a win-win, you know, for the cost of paperwork for the town. We, you know, give our businesses a new financing option for green upgrades. So thank you again.
Thank you for the good work.
Keep it up. Thank you, guys. Next, moving on. The board will consider approving a change of manager for the Section 12 All Alcohol License for 110 Grill from Anthony Carlucci to Robert Nelson. There's been a Cory and a Sorry check on the new manager. Is Robert here or online?
Does anyone named Robert? There's six people, but I don't see anyone named Robert.
All right. Any of those people on Zoom on behalf of the 110 license transfer?
Just raise your hand if you are.
Nothing. Okay. So Elaine, do you want to walk us through? This is like this, it's not a super common thing. We've had it come across the board once in a while. They change managers. It's part of the process. I think for right now, it's important to discuss because of all the emphasis we've put on, not only Vic license, but also alcohol. So it looks like everything's in place we had in the packet. I just wanted you to weigh in on this, please.
Yes, so for alcohol licenses, anytime there's a change of manager, the board needs to approve that. And as you mentioned, we did do a Cory and Sorry check, and it came out fine. And so it's just a change of manager proposed by 110 Grill.
Perfect. I'll look to the board for any initial thoughts, questions. Usually, we have someone here representing the change. So this is a little, a little different this time.
Now, I think looking at the documents, and it's a routine process, but we definitely want to ensure that we have checked all the boxes for this. So Elaine, you feel comfortable that we can go ahead and do that? And I'm glad to hear we did Sorry also this time, right? So both Cory and Sorry, and they came out okay? Yeah, nothing further than that.
Amy, any thoughts?
No, I don't think so, but I appreciate the detail and information in the packet.
Yeah, I'm just giving one last look through it. Yeah, I mean, everything, everything looks in order. Again, I think the preference would be to meet the person typically. And so I hope at some point, we can meet Mr. Nelson and welcome him to this new role. But I'll look for a motion from the board on this one.
I mean, we will be doing the renewals soon. Could we request that he come to the renewal?
There will be a renewal for the 110 Grill the next meeting.
So if we wanted, we could ask him to come for that one, too, since he's not here tonight.
Okay.
But I'm comfortable approving it.
Are you recommending, yeah, I was just going to say, are you recommending approving it or holding off?
I'm recommending approving, but if, but I thought, since we'll have an opportunity in a couple of weeks, maybe we see him.
Okay.
We can ask.
I'm comfortable with that.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I will look for a motion for that one.
I move to approve the change of manager to Robert Nielsen for 110 Grill, 1 Lumber Street.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. So that is done. And we will, can we extend a formal invitation for Mr. Nelson to join us at the next meeting, please? Next, we have, we'll consider hearing about it and discussing a parade in Hopkinton that would be held on July 4th. Welcome. Thank you both for joining us.
Welcome. I believe we have some slides for this. Ben, if you're out there somewhere?
Yep, so Jim Robley, so Tenledge Stone Drive. I am the Chair of the Hopkinton Republican Town Committee, as well as the Vice Chair of the Veterans Celebration Committee.
And I'm Amy Groves, 2 College Street, and I am the Chair of the Hopkinton Democratic Town Committee.
So, I can start. You should have...
I do.
Okay, great. First off, I want to thank Amy for putting this together, and I'll let her walk through it. What the HRTC wanted to do, along with the HDTC, was sort of take a step from a community perspective to show that two political parties can work together, right? It's, it's been a challenging time for the last few years. But I think at a local level, just reminding everybody that we're neighbors, and there's issues, a lot of issues that we agree upon, and we wanted to see where we could work together. So Amy's been great. We've got some ideas focused on a Fourth of July Independence Day Parade. Horribles Parade is off the table. We've learned that we're moving past that. And we've got some ideas on how to approach that. And we want to run them by you folks to see how we step forward.
So if it's okay that this isn't displayed on the monitor, I'll just speak to the point... Oh, it is. Okay, very good.
We got it on that one.
Very good. So we do propose a July 4th parade sponsored by the Veterans Celebration Committee, which is a town committee and both of our town political committees. We want to stress positive messaging, you know, happy birthday, America. This is the 250th birthday, town spirit, that sort of thing. And that, and we will have that in our advertising, and we'll just set the tone for that. It'll be open to everyone, families, teams, organizations, businesses, town committees. If, you know, certainly the police and fire will invite them. And we'll follow the familiar parade route that you see here on the slide. It's the same one that was followed for the Horribles Parade. And we would like to award prizes at the gazebo at the end of it. We don't plan on having any food or drink or anything like that. And we would negotiate the exact time. And when we submit the formal application, we'll have that set. But we want to talk to the Lake Mass Pinoc folks because there's a boat parade the same day. So we might move it up to 11:00 instead of noon. But we want the whole town to feel welcome at it. And we would bring the Application Safety Plan and Litter Plan, which are all required. We'd bring that to you at a subsequent meeting, and it'll be in your packet. And it will be revised as necessary based on your input tonight. So that's what we propose. And we have four requests from you. Would you like me to read them, or you want to cover them?
Sure.
Okay. See how well we work together. What we would like, because we are now working with a town committee, and we would put them up front and center because we think the veterans really should be there, right? It's the Fourth of July. We would propose that the insurance and police detail be done through the town. The police detail isn't a lot of money from the Select Board perspective, but it is money. And so there are some different ways that this could be handled. I don't know if you want to get into those details, but for instance, the Veterans Celebration Committee could up their budget request, or perhaps there could be a small line item transfer. I'm sure that our town manager has some ideas on how we could do that. But we just, you know, we've been discussing that. We would need to approve a slight change in the charge document that would be coming from you for the Veterans Celebration Committee because currently, the charge document just says that they're responsible for two events per year. This would be just adding the third event to their very short charge document. If available, we would love it for all of you and perhaps adding the town clerk and town moderator to be judges and award prizes for most artistic float or best family float or whatever it is. That might make you more popular or less popular. I'm not sure which, but... And we would like to get your comments and your input, if possible, your direction to go ahead with the, for us to submit the parade application, the safety plan, and litter control plan for your final approval at a later date. We just wanted to kind of get together with you tonight because of the history with the Horribles Parade and, and all of that. We wanted to kind of do this preliminary step.
If I could, maybe speak to the Veterans Celebration Committee piece of this. So we had a meeting a week ago where, where we had a discussion with regards to the funding piece and sort of, one of the reasons why we're bringing it to the Veterans Celebration Committee is they, they have funding. I'm not sure what the appropriate terminology would be outside of their funding that's done every year for the two events, the Memorial Day events and the Veterans Day events, but funded through their, their marathon runner sponsorship. So there, there is, you know, some funding available through the Veterans Celebration Committee. We feel like Independence Day, Fourth of July is in keeping with the spirit of the Veterans Celebration Committee. We took, I'll say, a non-binding vote at our committee. All members were in favor of moving forward, provided the Select Board was in agreement that it made sense with something that we could do and do, of course, legally. So Veterans Celebration Committee is on board. Our committees are on board. We just need you folks on board.
And this was Jim's great idea. He came to me with the idea. I presented it to the Democrats, and the Democrats are totally pumped about it.
Awesome. First of all, thank you. You know, I think it's really important to have a Fourth of July parade in town. I think it was, I think it was something that was missing this summer. And I really applaud both committees for kind of working together, putting the partisan stuff aside and trying to do something that's best for Hopkinton and setting an example for how political parties should, you know, cooperate. So thank you both for that. I'm pretty comfortable with everything on here. I don't, I don't see anything that I would be concerned about. I'll look to my colleagues for additional comments and questions.
Yeah, no, I think in concept, I think it's a really good idea. I would not have been comfortable with us sponsoring, as a town, the Horribles Parade, even though I've enjoyed it with my kids over the years. It just doesn't seem like a town-sponsored thing. But converting to a Fourth of July parade, I think, is a really good idea. I don't know if we have the funds that we could allow them to use the insurance or how we would go about changing the charge of the Veterans Celebration Committee.
Well, I think this is the budget season, so this is the time to budget for it. And it isn't a lot of money, so we could certainly do that.
And then I want to note that it was Matt Kistner, I think, that really brought this up at the beginning of the year, and he's not here tonight to weigh in. But this is not the final vote anyway, so we could let him weigh in next time.
Yeah, no, first of all, I commend your leadership. Thank you, Jim, for taking the initiative, and Amy for the collaboration. And this is exemplary, I think, leadership for our town. And I hope our national leaders also learn from it. But this is great. I'm really hyped and excited. And it solves a long-term, I think, or in the near-long-term debate that we have been having. And I think the $784 is a small change for the camaraderie and the spirit that is priceless. So again, I commend your leadership. I fully support it, and I can't wait to make it happen. Thank you again.
Can I add, if I could? I just, I think we would like to get more feedback from town staff, too, on what we need to do to protect the town or if they would want certain guidelines or, or what, maybe at the next meeting.
Sure, and I think it's important, too, that, I mean, next year, in 2026, it's the Mass 250, so it makes sense to have an event. And, you know, Fourth of July is a good time to do that. So it's a good time to have a town event.
If I could, I do feel obligated to share from the Veterans Celebration Committee that they were okay signing up for the, to have co-sponsored parade, but not a town-wide 250th event.
It's a lot of work.
A lot of, probably budget, too.
I think, you know, for tonight, what I'm hearing is like a general yes to move forward this. I think we need to get a couple of details, probably come back at our next meeting or the one after that so that we have specifics on whatever we need to do for the Veterans Committee charge, change that, understanding of the budget situation, how we're going to make it work, just so we can come with more of a motion to finalize it. But I think for right now, I think we're, it sounds like everyone's comfortable moving forward and expect to have you guys back here shortly.
Okay, great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right.
Through the chair, just a quick follow-up. Elaine, so for the 250th celebration, are we going to have a separate discussion and during the budget session for that budget?
I don't know that anyone's planning anything at this moment, but it's time to think about it.
Maybe future agenda item?
Yeah.
All right. So next, the board will consider discussing the special town meeting scheduled for this Thursday, December 4th. Do we have anyone joining us? I know this is one simple article, should be very straightforward. You want to walk us through, hopefully, the shortest special town meeting Hopkinton's ever had?
Sure, and what we have in the packet is the draft motion that would be made. So it amends the 2026 budget to reduce the general fund appropriation and change the amount appropriated for debt service and employee benefits and insurance to drop the appropriation to $120 million, 825,637.
Awesome. And again, I don't think we can emphasize this enough. This is not returning money to people. It's preventing people from being overcharged at the end of the month when tax bills get released, right?
Right, and so if there isn't a vote for whatever reason, then we will have to tax at the higher rate.
Yep. So what you're saying is we need about 130 people to show up on Thursday night for 31 for a very short period of time so that we can walk through the motion and hopefully have unanimous agreement on not overtaxing our residents.
It depends on families and everyone. But this is great. This means if we are, just to simplify it, if we are to charge our tax at a X rate today, this would ensure we don't charge X, which is a little bit higher than what it should be. We will be charging X minus Y after the article is passed. So it'll reduce the tax rate that's coming up.
Correct. It would be what the board voted, the tax, saw the tax forms at the last meeting.
The John Neese shared us the slides, yeah.
Thank you.
And we do have Kylie here to answer any specific questions.
I mean, I think this is pretty straightforward from a, you know, a town meeting perspective, what we need to do, what we're looking, we're just making sure people show up. I can't imagine anyone wanting to be overcharged on their tax bill. So hopefully, this is a, this is a pretty easy one. We don't need a motion or anything tonight. This was just to put the motion publicly. I think, just from like a housekeeping standpoint, the board will meet right before the seven o'clock, the town meeting's at seven, and the board will technically meet right before that.
Could meet at 6:30. An agenda's posted. If there's any reason to discuss the article, could do it then. The town meeting is at the high school auditorium?
Yep.
And not the middle school.
And then we also have another item at our meeting, too, to accept a donation.
To accept a donation for holiday lights.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah.
And I was going to say, I really thought the chart, which is on page 100 of our, our packet, is really helpful because even though everybody agrees that they would like to spend less on taxes if it's not needed, people are still confused about why we're doing it. They can't recall having done it before. And I think the chart is really helpful just to see where the differences were with what we originally estimated versus where we are now. And I, because I'm really trying to talk it up to people to get people to come, but people are still confused, and I think they're going to ask these same questions on a Thursday night, so we shall see. But I will be there, and I'll bring the other two voters in the household.
And I think it's, we'll have plenty of minutes to walk through this in detail for anyone that has a question that night. Again, for the sake of getting people out, you don't want to be overtaxed at the end of the month. So hopefully, again, very quick special town meeting. I think, I think we are good with that piece, Elaine. Move on to the town manager report.
So just very brief town manager report. Regarding the Main Street Carter project, the paving from Wood Street to the fire station was completed on November 18th. Temporary striping of that part of the project was completed on the 24th. The contractor, Amarillo, was on-site that week to finish the winter cleanup, and they'll be off-site for the winter when the cleanup is continued and completed. Paving at the intersection and the east side of the project will be scheduled by Mass DOT and Amarillo next year after the marathon.
Can I ask about the bike lanes? So I don't, the bike lanes have not been striped, and I don't think the signals are working for the bike lanes. So if a bike is on the bike path and they get to the center intersection, there's not, there's going to eventually be a special bike lane, like to tell them when to go, but it's not there yet.
Yes, there's more coming, and it's too cold to stripe now. Have to do that in the spring, so.
And the signals, it's too, you can't do that.
And whatever signals need to be finished will hopefully be done.
Okay.
At that point, or sooner. And there are no town position vacancies to consider filling today.
Awesome. So I think that brings us to liaison reports and board invites. I did not have anything this week. I think things were pretty quiet over the Thanksgiving break, but Amy or Scheidel?
I don't have anything either.
There is, I'm just looking at the date. There's something, like a Hockington Lights Up is one event, I think.
Well, isn't this Saturday the?
Lantern Festival, yeah. So that's, yeah, Saturday at the library, Lantern Festival. Hockington Lights Up is one, so it's an activity for the kids, and just a, you know, spirit of unity and hope in the dark. You know, it's dark and it's nice and light.
Doesn't that start with the holiday stroll, gone by the Chamber in the afternoon?
Yep.
So.
Right, so the holiday stroll, we should mention, plug, we should plug.
So holiday stroll, for those that don't know, the Chamber Commerce puts it on. It's a great little event. Saturday, this Saturday afternoon, a lot of the businesses in town are open. And, you know, weather depending, it's a great opportunity to just kind of walk around before the lights go up. So, you know, we took the kids last year. We had a great time with it, and we plan on being there again.
Both the boy scouts and girl scouts do activities for the event as well.
Perfect. We've got future board agenda items. Do we want to add anything?
I think we can add the 250th celebration-related.
So the 250th celebration?
Yeah.
The July 4th parade is already on there. We could kind of add it to that one.
Together?
Together.
We can probably take off, well, yeah, combine it or take off. I think we should just take that one off. I think it's two separate things. We heard from Jim that the veterans can't take on the 250th celebration, so we don't want to, we're going to have a general discussion based off the town without any committees for that one.
Okay.
So we'll remove F. And I think, do we have it on? We continued the financial policies last meeting. I don't think we got around to that, so I think we want to get that back on for the next meeting. Yeah, that's under L, so that's already on there. But otherwise, I think, I don't see anything else that needs to be cleaned up. Any thoughts?
I think not now. We did clean up the last time. Now, the financial policy review, we're still going to do that again, right?
That's the one I just mentioned, yeah. We'll do that at, hopefully, the next meeting.
Yep.
Good.
And the licensure notes will be, our next December meeting, we'll do those? The licensure notes will be the next December meeting?
Yes.
All right. You guys good? All right, so that brings us to a continuation of public forum. So if there's anyone available that did not get to speak before, please come on up. And thank you for sticking around. We're trying something new.
I appreciate you guys putting the time involved here, so I appreciate you guys putting the time in. Mike O'Reilly, 201 West Main Street. I've been on the lake since I moved here in 2003. I've been with the LMPA often, I'm mostly on for about 18 or 19 of those years, including when we first bought the dam. I was there when we first started doing these things on the weeds. And it's really interesting, because as you guys change your seeds, and we have to re-educate and things, we kind of get a lot of things. There's a lot of things that aren't necessarily accurate, that it really bothers me when people say things that knowing aren't true. One thing is, we're all concerned about the health of the lake. None of us would want to use chemicals unless we really had to. But one of the reasons that conservation changed, and you can talk to Ed directly, but when Lake Whitehall became so bad, that the weeds are so bad, that's the future of Mass Pinoc. That was one of the things in a conversation he had with me, that he said, you know, we don't want it to get to there, so we have to do something. That's why when they changed the vote, they originally approved it years before when a private citizen brought it. Rick Odell actually brought it first. Conservation approved it, then we went for public funding and the town paying for it. Then they turned it down. So that's kind of the history, some of the history to it. But some of the things are just not true. Yes, the chemical is outlawed in some European countries. Chemists told me, yes, it is, but not for water. It's outlawed for above ground in a lot of the European countries, not in water itself. They actually use it in waterways in many European countries. It would help the lake. What's happening is, the weeds are so thick, the natural life, the fish, everything else has changed. And yes, there is for the recreational, and yes, I do use it for recreational, but there's a lot of things that happen when a lake gets choked out with too many weeds. And I think sometimes we reinvent fire, and we reinvent the wheel. The CIG Committee was formed by your Board several years ago. And actually, you had a lot of people with their anti-herbicide on the original boards, that once they got all the science, and that's what we got to stick with, is the science. There's not, as an attorney, you know, people throw out the word liability, and everybody, oh, stop. Here we say chemicals, PFAS, chemicals, it's bad. Well, let's do the science. Let's, I appreciate your time. Towns have been using this for 40 years, because they were using it for 30 years when we started. There's no increase in cancer in any of the times they've done that. Just use the science in your decision-making, not on fearful words. That's all.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two hands raised up.
You have two on Zoom. All right, well, let's work with anyone in the room who would like to go first. Welcome.
Hi. Karen Crum, 12 Joseph Road. I literally wrote this down. I'm not making this up. I wanted to thank you for how public forum had been handled over the last several weeks. I watch public forums for other towns, and I know that what you'd been doing with giving, you know, not a set amount of time, and not, and three minutes instead of two, was generous, and I loved it. So that's what I wrote down. Like, I'm not just saying this because you changed it tonight. Maybe you'll change it back. I wish you had said, we are going to be making a change after tonight to maybe prepare people, or maybe at the beginning of the year. I find it a little bit, like, odd that after so many people are speaking out about things that have led to more public coverage, there's suddenly a big change. It just doesn't really sit that well with me, but it could be something I'm just making up in my head. I also love the response time that you've been giving to responding to the public forum from the previous week. I think that's great, and I really appreciate it. I was surprised to not hear anything about the Van Ralton letter in there, because that was a big deal. And I think that still is a big deal. When, a year ago tomorrow, when there was a meeting in here, and the Select Board had called in different people from the school committee, and the principals, and the police department, and the fire department, to ask about, you know, what had happened with the whole swatting incident, I still do not think that the schools have a written-out plan. And the reason is that that plan does come from the police department. The schools don't write it. But after that meeting, another resident and I actually asked Carol Kavanaugh, Chief Bennett, and Scott Van Ralton if that had been written. And Scott Van Ralton said to us, we don't tell the schools what to do. I really don't know if there's a plan, and it's something I really wish you'd look into. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? We'll go to Zoom.
There's Steve Snow and Donald.
Okay. Steve, can you hear us?
You there?
Yes, we can hear you now, Steve. Welcome.
Hello, through the chair. I just wanted to let you know that I had put my hat in the ring to the Charter Review Commission, and I know that I am way out of my league in that issue.
Steve, can you speak up a little bit?
I honestly feel the town of Hockington has placed, basically, insiders on that committee, and that we need to have some form of dialect to each and every portion of our town charter, and not just rubber-stamp issues. The other thing that my thoughts are is, currently, are we going to, are we going to be doing public foruming at the beginning and the end of each Select Board meeting? And if so, I mean, that obviously changes the way people show up to public forum. As you know, I've sat through the entire meetings for number and number of times. And I'm just wondering, is this going to be the new norm? That if you have something to say, you can come at the end of public forum and do that? That would be my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. As a reminder, public forum, we can't respond in real time. So I'll continue at the start of public forum to remind people of the new process, where we'll, you know, have a set amount of time, then we'll have a continuation, right, moving forward? That's going to be the process that we'll follow, so I'll remind people of that. Sorry, you said there was another?
Yeah, Donald.
Hi, Donald, can you hear us?
Actually, it's Carol. I know I spoke earlier, but I had to leave, and now I'm back. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Carol. Name and address, please.
Yes, Carol Estler, 16 Oakhurst Road. 40 years on the lake, all the way back to when the Metcalf-Eddy study came out on the eutrophication of the lake. Eutrophication being the growth of aquatic plants that get in the way of humans. What I want to speak to is just a couple of things. I want to commend LMPA for their excellent work on the website about fertilizers in the lake. But if someone wants to change, they'll go to the website, and there's a lot of awful stuff going into the lake, nutrients and poisons from the whole watershed, and more work needs to be done on that and making people aware. I also want to say that it's really, really important that we remove some of the nutrients besides stopping putting more in. And nobody's talking about moving large boulders at the bottom of the lake. What we're talking about is small machines targeting areas of strong weed growth and removing some of the nutrient-rich soil, which now has more poisons in it, which makes it more difficult, from the bottom of the lake to slow the weed growth. The genie is out of the bottle. There will be invasive plants. You cannot get everything. It's not possible. And what we want to do is slow the weed growth, do it in a way that's healthy for the ecosystem, which is really, really important, and not continue the poison treadmill, which often contains PFAS as well, and we shouldn't discount that. And the last thing I'll say, I'll say quite simply as a grandmother. I have two beautiful granddaughters who have just learned to swim, and I want to do that with them in a non-toxic, polluted lake. So we need to honor the ecosystem above human convenience and make this a healthy, prosperous lake. There's a beaver on the lake now, and it's a deep drawdown this year. We could have great success. Let's not poison it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else with a hand raised?
Nope.
All right, so I think that covers us for tonight. I'll look for a meeting to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn today's meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.